I'll call a meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clear color roll, please.
Carter.
Here.
Gary.
Here.
McCallitt. Reed.
Here.
Mary Beth.
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I don't believe we're gonna need a full session for the Pledge of Allegiance unless the council would like to go into it. There's two open labor issues. One is the FOP contract and the other is the side letter agreement with fire union. And in both cases, it's really back and forth between the lawyers. And so I've done the reporting again on that fact that it's publicly announced.
Strike. Nine and ten from the agenda. Right, at this time, we'll open for public comments. If you have comment for council, please come to the podium. You have three minutes until we ask you, please state your name.
Sir, I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left, okay?
Hello, my name is Robert Lyte. I'm here to see about the carport at East, I'm sorry, at 613 Wisconsin Avenue.
About 30 minutes ago, I just slowly drove past your house. It'd be a ring, you might see me then.
Going past. Did anyone have a chance to go by?
I drove by and looked at it.
So our, with this one, we know the setback with the item, but kind of the question was, we haven't, we haven't really opened an alley. So we'll open that before, and do we want to, without getting too far with it not being on our agenda to discuss it, but. So, I think that's kind of where we are. We'll have to, council will have to decide if that's something we want to do and how we do it. Because we vacate them, which we actually have, I think, too, on our agenda tonight to close them, but we don't really open them often. So, so that's where we are right now.
I'm willing to pay for a variance if we have to. You know, I'd rather leave it right where it is, like I said before, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anthony Miller. I had a question about one of the alley nominations tonight on Grand Street. I received a notice in the mail that they went to 609 and a half Grand Street. I just got it like yesterday. I wanted to clarify how much of that alley is getting vacated. The one I have showed the full alley, but someone on the phone has told me that was possibly just 615 Grand Street. That portion, I just wanted to clarify that.
I believe you have the original notice from a month ago. The council tonight is gonna vote on closing it just starting at the property line between 609 and 615. So only 615 on to the west will be closed.
Another concern I had too with that is I'm not familiar with how that works for vacating alleys or anything, but I know we own the property at 609 and 609 and a half, and the only access we have to that back house is that alley. And I don't know what to do with that. It's just like a big butt pad. I thought about bringing gravel in to fix that, but if it's an alley, how do I go about asking that question? Whether either get the alleys and gravel back there or get it vacated for a driveway. I'll put the gravel in, but I need to have some kind of access to that house.
I can show you the adjusted map if you want.
Sure.
That one, okay. Is there no, I can come?
Yeah, I own every one I have, so I can send to the property there instead of my home address.
So it's 10th foot or at 68?
My concern is like, that's the only access I have.
Yeah, so the rest is already existed.
That's why, that's why we chose to amend the original request.
Like I said, I just found out about this probably this morning, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. One of our council members who's not here was, grew up right there, so he was familiar with that, that was his concern, was that 609 and a half.
I greatly appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions for council for tonight? All right, there are none. We'll go on to a bid opening. For publics, public sale, bid opening for surplus property. We'll open bids and then Patty Inter will record any bids that we have. Yeah, who does that?
Bid one for 609 North Lawson.
Yes, me.
Offer from Stephen Gegg, 607, oh, sorry, this is 609. So the bid for 609 North Lawson is $751.00.
And it was Stephen?
Gegg, G-E-G-G. Another bid for Mr. Gegg. For 611 North Lawson, $751.00. 1316 North Lawson, a bid from Blue Dolphin Properties LLC, $608. Bid for 503 East First. 503 East First is $658, again from Blue Dolphin Properties. Okay, another bid for 609 North Lawson. Second bid being from Blue Dolphin Properties at $678. Another bid for 611 North Lawson, from Blue Dolphin Properties, $678. Bid for 702 North Vermillion.
Yes.
From Kenny Hausman, H-O-U-S-M-A-N, bid is $500. Second bid for 702 North Vermillion, from Blue Dolphin Properties, $608. Last one. City Hall. Is that listed on, is that listed on our sheets?
No.
Let's see. Let me check the bid numbers. We're bid number 3326-428-004.
0224 Water Street? 3326-428-004.
Perfect.
Okay.
So yeah. So for 224 Water, the bid is $558. Blue Dolphin. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Blue Dolphin Properties. 558. 0 cents.
Were any of those contingent on anything? I know we had a few people.
There was no contingent on any dollars.
So we can have the second meeting in June. We prepare ordinances for the sale of these and recommendations that may be sold to the highest bidders and after post contracts.
Do you want to go with that? It looks like potentially 1, 2, 3. Potentially seven properties?
I bet six. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. Nine bids.
Nine bids.
Nine properties.
So we'll have this ready for June 19th, June 17th.
If I counted 702 North Vermillion twice.
Okay, did everybody hear about the bid?
I didn't hear a bid. What was the last bid just now?
The last one from Water Street?
Okay, not concerned about that.
This is Mr. Gegg.
Yeah, hi.
You were the apparent low bidder on the two property, or high bidder. I'm used to bidding. You're the apparent high bidder, and they're gonna do it on the, what day is it?
June 19th.
June 19th at the next council meeting.
June 19th?
Right.
Do I have to be back here for that?
No, we'll be in touch with you about a contract, okay?
You were the high bidder on the two property.
Yes, I've been mowing them for years.
Yeah, he's maintained them for like 10 years with the previous city management, wherever it was.
Jeremy, I told him if I could move my garden out there, I'd keep it mowed. I just mowed it today, so it's all nice and flat.
We appreciate that.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So two weeks, we'll, we'll reach out to the high bidders and then we'll have official ordinances ready for our next council meeting. Okay, we will go to item one, unfinished business. This is an ordinance, 2024-12, authorizing the vacation of a public right-of-way for an east-west alley south of 609 to 15 West Grant Street and north of 710 Short Street, LaSalle and Livingston Counties. Streeter, Illinois, can you get a motion and second to remove from the table?
No, we didn't, well, we voted it down.
Right.
We voted to move.
Oh, they did count this as a move, yeah.
We did not? Okay, so first and second, yes. No moves, okay.
Mr. Perry, second and Mr. Reed?
Yes, that's good.
We are good.
And just to be clear, it says 609 to 615, but that's starting on the west end of 609. We will have access to that building.
Any further discussion on this item? So it's shortened, so it's just that first, first area, not the entire alley. No further discussion, I will request the clerk, call the roll, please.
Carter.
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mary Beth.
Aye. New business, item two, ordinance 2024-13, authorizing the vacation of a public city right-of-way of a portion of north-south alley of 316 First Avenue, LaSalle and Livingston Counties. You get a motion and second.
So moved, second.
Moose and move with Tim with the second. Okay, Tim, Gary with the second. All right, any discussion?
I would like to bet Matthew's, he's definitely waiting for me on the end.
This is brought by Mr. Russ Wayden, so they bought the park at both sides of the alley, so they own both sides. They'd like to vacate and just be able to put a bench to there.
Yes, and to look at that they had. The whole south portion of that block, so. All right, any other questions or comments, discussion? Clear color roll, please.
Carter.
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mary Beth.
Aye. Item three, ordinance 2024-14, amending section 1024120 of the Streeter Municipal Code designating north-south alley located south of Charles Street, east of Powell Street, west of Cole Street, and west of lots 1 and 4 and block 6. The South Streeter addition to the city of Streeter is a no parking area in the city of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties. You get a motion and second.
So moved, second.
Okay, Dave Reed with the motion and Dave Connor with the second. Any discussion on this? We had discussed this a few months ago, just to try to ease some of the congestion and such by south-side diamonds along that alley. And we just are officially, we have signed up, but we need the ordinance to make it official. Any discussion or questions on this one? And should, do you think Tim should abstain as well?
Well, we have enough for the motion to pass and how to abstain. I don't think it's required, but.
I'll abstain.
Just. Okay, we'll have clerk, call the roll, please.
Carter.
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mary Beth.
Aye. Item four, ordinance 2024-15, regulating motor vehicle traffic and designating as one-way north-south alley located south of Charles, east of Powell, west of Cole, and west of lots 1 and 4, block 6. Again, can you get a motion and second?
So moved, second.
Okay. Dave Connor with the motion, Dave Reed with the second. Any discussion? Same alley again.
Does this need to say which way the traffic will flow?
Yeah, it does. Northbound traffic only on the 20 by 100 foot north-south alley. That's in section 2.
So you can exit south-side but not enter. Good. Great, we'll have clerk, call the roll, please.
Carter.
Aye.
Gary?
Abstain.
Abstain. Reed?
Aye.
Mary Beth.
Aye. All right, item five is our annual liquor advisory board and our oath for Streeter Liquor Commissioner. And then we'll just go through some of discussion on liquor licenses and video gaming. So I'll have Patty administer the oath.
Okay, this is for the council members. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will charge the duties.
That I charge the duties.
Of a member of the City of Streeter Liquor Control Commission.
As a member of the City of Streeter.
As the Liquor Control Commission. Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Without favor or partiality.
Without favor or partiality.
In accordance with the laws of the City of Streeter.
In accordance with the laws of the City of Streeter.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
So that's, every, every year, I think, we get to do that. So you should have in front of you, do you have information on licenses and what we have?
Those are in our package video, then.
Video, right. There is a count on here with what we have, so currently, the only licenses that we have available without increasing.
There.
There you go. So class A tavern, class B club, and class C package are all. With the cap, they're all full, so there's none available. We do currently have three class D restaurant licenses open. We have, we had voted to increase, we moved one last year, and then we had one not renewed and one that had expired and not renewed.
So it says on the chart, 14 are taken?
So this one I have 16 and 13 are taken.
13 are taken.
So currently, we have class D. We also last, it's August or September, added the live performance or special event venue. And that one is still open, movie theater's performance venue. Those are both open right now. The biggest item I get, and I try to keep council up to date on what I receive for requests. Biggest item is I'd like to change my license class or request a license so that I can have video gaming. Historically, we have tried to, if it's a restaurant, allow that. Because you have to have a port license, so you have to be a tavern or a restaurant, packaged liquor. Class A, B, and D, you can have gaming machines. Class C, you cannot, just packaged stores. With that, again, with that being the request, I just want to make sure council still agrees with that decision so that we can go probably till next year's old. That's still our policy. We also have in our ordinance that we are limiting the number of licenses solely for the purposes of gaming to be four. So we had, I believe we have four that are qualified, so those are all taken. So this is kind of our, I guess, my first discussion. And then we also have printed out our video gaming report of what we have to date, or what has been gone through so far this year in Streeter. And city limits, we have a total of 36 establishments, and is that right? 201 gaming machines within our city.
Yes.
It's a. I feel like that's going off, and I don't know if that's. So is that, is that enough? So that's one machine for every 62 people? Does that seem right? 12,500 people divided by 201, I'm a mess. So that's, I mean, I mean, that's not including outside of city limits, but if we have approximately 13,000 people, 12,500, 13,000. That's what 201 machines counts as, one for every 62 men and children of city limits. So looking at, at this report, my question to council is, do we want to continue with that policy? You do, we do have five people on our waitlist. I have, it lists four as class C, but I believe two of these might be class A on here. Or requesting a class A. Two are requesting packaged liquor sales to our current package C license holders that are, would like to have a port license to allow for machines. And one is a restaurant that would like to get a license and then subsequently add machines. So that's kind of what's on my waitlist right now. Do we want to, well, any comments or discussion on this one, or do we want to?
We want to mow it over.
Think about this some more?
Are we going to get away from class A tavern licenses?
Well, part of, I, I guess part of what, I'm, because what my question is, so a class A tavern versus a restaurant license. The difference between those would be food sales. And technically, a restaurant should have 51% or more of their revenue from food versus a bar that serves food versus a restaurant that serves alcohol. So I don't see a designation or a difference between those. My question's more along the line of, I get a lot of requests for people that want video gaming machines. And along what criteria should I continue to decide whether I allow that license? So if someone wanted a restaurant, historically, for the last year, if it's been a restaurant, we say, yes, go ahead. We'll give you the license, because we know restaurants is, it's a tough business, and we tried, you know, COVID and how all that changed and everything, so we've been granting that. But do we want to grant licenses if we know that it's gonna lead to more gaming machines? So that's kind of what I, what I want to get to.
I'm just wondering, if we get away from, from the tavern licenses, looking more to restaurants, it's hard for restaurants right now to get help, and if we're gonna require that, it's gonna be even harder.
The other part is we, there is a provision in our liquor ordinances that allows us to request, basically, their books and get an idea if they're in the right classification. So there's a couple that I've looked at that I don't know if they quite qualify as, and it's mostly between that class A or class D. This is a restaurant or a tavern license, and do we want to go through that whole procedure to make sure that everyone's classified properly as well? So we can, you know, we can mow it over and, for two weeks and come back to it, but that's kind of what I wanted to.
This is a lot to digest.
I know, it's a lot.
And vote on something right away. My first inclination.
Tonight's not really a vote, it's more of a just discussion and what should we do going forward, and do we need to change ordinances, change our caps, what do we want to do with them?
My inclination is, why would we want to discourage economic development by limiting what we've got? But then again, you get into, you're just gonna start cannibalizing, you know? But it's capitalist system we have here, and if you let everybody get in the game, the best one will win. The worst ones will go out of business and drop off, so why would we want to discourage?
Well, is it?
People from opening a business or expanding the business because we're limiting liquor licenses.
I guess my aspect isn't so much liquor licenses, it's more like gaming that comes along with it. You know, I, I would, if I had 10 restaurants wanting to come to town, I would absolutely love that, but it's more of the machines than. The, the video gaming feather flags are all over town, or, you know, it just gets to. So that's, do we want to keep proliferating along those lines? That's where, where it comes down to.
And one of the aspects you need to consider is not all of the holders, not all the gaming machines are in businesses. This is important revenue stream for the Legion and various service clubs, rental clubs out there. And to the extent that they would be thankful to leave, that, that they could have other, others that might not be desirable.
And I know it's the, the state's rule, not ours, that they have to have a liquor license to have the gaming. A lot of them don't care about the liquor, they just want to provide the gaming, but they have to get a liquor license to do it, which I don't understand.
Yeah, one of the largest ones is like Suzie's, for example. And they're competition with the Legion and some of the other clubs out there.
For people that just want to go see the games, not run around, go to a bar and drink.
And I guess that's a question.
Whole different business, but it's.
Because I can probably get five businesses to open next week if I said you have a gaming license, but is that what's good for Streeter? Is it, does it help us because we're filling spaces, or does it hurt us because it's taking that business away from the people that already have been here for years and have their license? So that's where, that's the decision that I'm gonna ask council to, to think about and help decide what we're gonna do with those. help decide what we're going to do with those, so.
So do we have something in writing, a policy like that?
We have our, whatever's in our liquor ordinance, and it's just been...
But that's not a policy.
It's not a policy.
That's what you're asking, you want us to...
I just want to make sure that I'm, that you're agreeing with my decisions that I'm making. Now, I don't need, there's going to be times when we disagree, but I want to make sure that I'm going in the right direction with these, with the rest of council, because...
Your ordinance is just your policy.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it is an ordinance that will limit a four for video gaming, partly. That is an ordinance, our, our cap, our caps is an ordinance, it's more of when, when do we decide to move someone or not? You know, do we want, do we want to take them as a, as a request comes in, look at their request and say, okay, we're going to move, add one additional Class A to move someone here? Kind of go forward, I just want to make sure we're all going on the same page, so. Say, go ahead and mull it over and let me know what you think, and go through the numbers and everything, and we can go from there. Okay? We will go to our discussion item, number six is the oxidation ditch and sewer maintenance project.
Well, Jeremy wrote the next one, and then we'll, no, not agree with him, but...
Well, I can, I, a year ago or so, we were awarded money through the federal omnibus budget through Tammy Duckworth's office, granting us one point two million dollars to get improvements done at the wastewater treatment plants.
And this is an improvement that affects the, really, well, all parts of the plant are important, but this is where the primary biological treatment activity within the plant that converts the dirty water.
And it sounds very glamorous when we talk about the ditch at the wastewater treatment plant.
So this is a critical component, and over the years, Jeremy has been really close at disasters, but on this case, you're a third off.
I usually like to talk about the sewer plant, but not today.
So, so we were about one point one, what was it, one point one four nine billion dollars off, so about a third of the project was, came in over budget in part due to higher costs for the equipment, and that's a moving target for your...
That's, for my understanding, went up two hundred thousand dollars in a year?
Yeah, and I think the biggest component is the contractors, because the flood of federal money, just like we get a lot of federal money for a project like this, other communities have kind of money, so there's only the same number of contractors bidding out for all of this work, and so we're just seeing higher prices because they're not as desperate. You want to walk through your estimates and...
Yeah, so as I laid out, so we got, we got two bids. This is construction here in town with the low bidder, and three, three million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifteen, and we had Leander, who's been here before. So since I've been here, we've done two major, or three major projects of the plant, this would be the fourth one. These are the bidders, there's a couple others, we usually have two to four bidders, I mean, that's, these are the common players here. But the issue is, so this bid was put there, my estimate was put together in twenty-twenty-two, and we reached out to Senator Duckworth's office to apply for funding. We actually asked for, the other side of this, I didn't put it in, we asked for one point six, we got one point two, so we put a little closer ahead we got there. But anyway, we have two million dollars in this year's approved budget, one point two million dollars in federal funds, and we were going to put in the eight hundred thousand dollars of city sewer funds. So of course, that's two million.
Jeremy did also ask when it came into budget, if there's any more federal money available.
Yeah, okay, yeah, get that back. So that was the first question of the feds, is there any additional money, and the answer was no. So, now with this case, so breaking down where we went, what happened is, I had quotes, the major equipment at the ditch, I had the quote from the material supplier in twenty-twenty-two, was a million dollars a change, I put a million dollars there. That quote for the equipment is now one point four five nine, so it was four hundred eighty thousand, it was gone up twice in two years. And talking to the low bidder, and that cost for Leander as well, labor's gone up, and so, and this project will extend into twenty-twenty-five because of the equipment order, so there's, they majesticate all, they don't know where labor's going to be either, so that's in, and I'll then, I take my lumps on the third line there that I probably started out ten, fifteen, twenty percent low, so, which I could come up here, and I've done that before, but never to this, to this range, so. So basically, looking at, you have options now, so your options, looking to move ahead, the two, the big spreadsheets, I think members of the council have seen in the past, these are our sewer estimating, we maintain this spreadsheet to look at how our revenues, the expenses are going to come in for a period of, you know, up fifteen years. The near term is pretty close, and we get out, you know, with projections, but it was updated in February of twenty-twenty-four, so the starting line there, sewer construction fund balance, the six thirty-two, to make that number real, every year we kind of update that at the start of the year, to make sure the cash carryover from the previous year is right. So we updated that in February to look at it, and stepping back, the sewer, the city sewer funds are kind of housed by city council policy established, you know, about ten years ago. There's two kind of pots, they're all co-mingle, but it's two pots of money. You keep around three hundred thousand dollars in construction balance, like construction funds, so there's three hundred thousand dollars that could be allocated, say Thomas Edition wanted to come into the city street, and that was why it was set aside. A neighborhood wants to come in, rather than trying to go out and get money, we said, yes, we'll, we'll bring a sewer and bring in if it's happening, so there's three hundred thousand dollars there, and then there's another pot of money by council policy of one point five million dollars for emergency sewer depreciation funds. So there's funds that are, in case something, the wall of the oxidation ditch blows out and we have to do an emergency repair, that's, we can just say, contractor comes start, we have money to fund that right, so there's those monies. The first option is, so based on, based on those two things, you can self-fund this overage, you could move ahead with a warrant of disarming and self-fund this overage. We would have to adjust some of our smaller scale projects over the next couple of years, and then through twenty-twenty-nine, you take five hundred thousand dollars out of sewer depreciation and draw that balance down to a million dollars instead of one point five, and then fund it back for five years to get back to the one point five, which is provided by policy. So that's option one, and then option two, which Dave and I discussed, and I talked with federal and US EPA, would be to delay the project and have to rebid, but try to seek out low interest loan funds from the state of Illinois, which they have, and potentially be awarded a third principal forgiveness. On our last two EPA loan projects, you see the wastewater treatment upgrade, the traffic addition on that planning, and Center Street, actually the last three, because of our population, we get a third forgiven. If the work's completed properly, a third of the cost is forgiven by the state, and then you play the two-thirds first. So that's option two, is to attempt that. The issue is, is both federal and US EPA would have to agree, and I'll leave it over to Dave there.
Yeah, well, and to the extent you or I have a disagreement as to what our recommendation was, I want you to feel free to completely, because you folks ultimately have to make a decision, and no one really can predict the future, just like we made our best guess as to what the project is going to cost, because if we known it was going to be a three million dollar project, we would have approached it a bit differently, we probably would have began the process of applying for the loan to at least make that available for an option today. It's not available, and it's a long and involved process, in order to get the loan from the state as well as to get the potential refunding or forgiveness of about a third, that's a common practice, but it's not guaranteed.
It's just a potential, not a guarantee.
It's not guaranteed, but it's, it's, given our demographics in it, I think it's a reasonable assumption to make. And so our risks are, or the benefit of moving forward, is we're locking our costs, we know exactly what our head, but the community's pretty much paying for everything above the grant that we receive, so we're spending two million dollars plus on a three million dollar project. And there are going to be other needs potentially planned and unplanned, that we may or may not have the resources to fund. One of the things that came up over the past couple of months is, there was a significant review of our insurance coverage for both the sewer plant and other public works facilities, and the whole insurance market is kind of up in the air, and there's a concern that we might be underinsured, just because the cost of insurance is kind of flowing through the roof, particularly flood insurance. Our coverage at Murdoch, for example, is going to be less going forward than it was in the past. In any case, it would, the benefit would be, we lock in our cost, but we would have less in reserves for potential anomalies that nobody can predict. And the other downside is, since we co-mingle all of our funds when we place them in the bank, that money is available for liquidity for other funds. We get major payments in our general fund a couple times a year because of property taxes, and so if we ever run into a bit of a liquidity crunch, right now, I think our general fund is healthy, the likelihood of the next year or two of that happening is pretty small, but if a tornado rips through town or some event occurs, we're going to have fewer local resources where we can act immediately. And the time to get debt funding, EPA funding, is months, it's six months or more.
January, Jeremy.
Right, it's just an involved process to get any kind of low-cost funding. And so we run the risk of not just having the cash on hand. I think we can do it fine, I think that would be a reasonable, if you wanted to move that way, it'd be reasonable. Where I come down is, I prefer to have more cash, and on the three million dollar project, if we get a third that refunded, that's an additional six hundred thousand dollars that local ratepayers all have to contribute for this major project. Now, if the project goes over budget, well, the loan would be a little bit greater, and our cost, two-thirds would be that much greater, but we'd also get more support. We cannot do that, though, if we can't get an extension on the grant. So everything will depend on the flow of funds with the grant. If they give no extension on the grant, then I think we're forced into option A, which is, we're just moving forward. Option B is, let's see if we get an extension, and at the same time, if, you know, we start filling out the paperwork, try to get an Illinois EPA loan with the potential for forgiveness, and even if we get the loan and we decide to early refund the loan, you know, there's really no cost associated with doing that, if we wanted to pay our money, to pay off the loan. We could do that after we get the forgiveness, for example. But the downside of that is, a three million dollar project could be something larger than that. And, you know, who knows what the economy is going to do, particularly in this sector? So we just wanted to kind of lay out the challenges that we're now dealing with, it's not a slam dunk, this is what we plan, we got a grant, everything's within budget, approved a little bit. It's a bit, it's a bit much, and I didn't want to provide a recommendation without you guys knowing, really, the alternatives, pros and cons on those alternatives. I looked at other things, Bob Bell maybe trying to do it in the house and that, and kind of gave up on that because I think there are risks associated with doing something like that that's greater than the other two options that are available. Is there anything else?
No, I said, yeah, I can reach out to federal EPA and, I've had conversations with them. The one-time grant extension is allowed by the rules, whether or not they would do it is still to be decided. But we do have some time, and the other thing that's in there is, we have until August ninth, it's a ninety-day hold window on the bids, so we can develop some alternatives and look at it.
And maybe if we decide to delay, maybe if the grant agency lets us buy the equipment and lock that price in, that would limit our future risk and future pricing. There may be something we could do to try to limit the future costs of the project if we wanted to attempt that, I can't, I think we can't speak to whether or not that's possible today, depends on decisions that others are going to make. So you're entitled to a recommendation. My recommendation is, let's throw out, let's not accept the bids, because they're a third over budget, and plan to rebid, assuming, and we don't have to make a final decision on that tonight, because we have a little bit of a battle, but assuming that the grant will, agency will give us more time, essentially one year, that would be what I'd recommend, and then we can look at the other things about advanced buying of equipment or whatever, but, and then at the same time that is taking place, start the process of an EPA loan. The alternative is, let's go proceed at the next meeting and approve the project. Right? Is that about it? Jeremy, do you have a recommendation?
We have funds to self-fund this if we had to.
We can, but we're drawing down reserves that could affect...
Right.
And I'm just, like, I'm always concerned, because, well, Streeter had a tornado, I've worked in towns that had tornado, two different towns, I've, I've seen the other communities experience flooding that has devastated, I've worked in a town that had two subsequent floods, so I, I'm gun-shy about, you know, we got to be prepared for that, and we can't always assume the outside world is going to come to our aid immediately, even if it's a federally declared disaster, it can take a year or more to get the money. And a lot of times, communities are hit with extremely devastating events, but because it's not regional, it doesn't qualify for federal support or state support, you don't get any outside money, you're on your own. And so I had an event once, which was a flood, it didn't really affect us all that much, but since it was so regional, I got money I wasn't even expecting to get, so it could work both ways. But that's kind of where I'm at, I, I think we have to be prudent and be careful, and keep our cash if we can, but the downside of that is, we don't know what the next round of bidding is going to result in. We could be unfavorably...
Yeah. Rebid might be even higher.
It could be higher, I can't, we can't go all the way.
It's like a four hundred fifty thousand dollar increase over two years, just on part.
But at that point, we would be in a position to borrow a little bit more and spread out the pain, whereas now, the pain is all, it's hit us all at once.
Well, I guess, maybe my question's kind of, can we blend one and two, or is there a way to mesh there where we accept the bids, go forward, because I'm assuming, and maybe I'm wrong, you know, with a lot of equipment, if it's a long lead time, sometimes it's half down, half at the end. By the time we get the equipment, we have an EPA loan available to us?
The EPA loan has to be in place before we work with it.
Before we order it.
Yeah, so that's, yeah.
If we, and I mentioned it to you this afternoon there, if I had known it was going to be like this, we would have started this process on a loan. We've, Jeremy has done a phenomenal job with this capital improvement plan, adult on the streets and utilities, so this is, and we're dealing with an exceptional, with the COVID monies and all that available out there, this is, this is, nobody could have predicted this better.
Could the project be split, whereas we apply for an EPA loan for labor and installation? Nope?
No, of course, because the federal, in the federal, and this I said, and so I take responsibility, but the federal grant that we wrote requires that the equipment be purchased and installed, and so we're locked into the items that listed in the memo must be completed within the grant term of the federal grant, and so we can go for the extension or just proceed as planned.
Yeah, so if you want to spend a million dollars, well, two million dollars, a million more than we had planned today for the next two weeks, or you want to apply for a loan, go out for bid, and expect to get, reasonably expect to get full forgiveness of about a third, so that's about six hundred thousand dollars, and if the bid, if we loan this particular bid...
And that's a fair amount of money, you know, I guess.
But if, but if there's, if this three million dollars turns into a six million dollar project, then we have to, you know, I don't think it'll happen, I don't, who knows?
It'll likely go up some, but I'm not, I can't say, I just feel bad that we were in a, put the council in a position, but that's... in, like, put the council in a position, but that's where I'm at.
I've had engineers always overestimate costs because it's always easier to say, hey, look, we got our projects at the safety, and it's hard to do financial planning when they do that. And, uh, Jeremy's estimates have always been really good. And this is kind of an unusual project, there are fewer, uh, sewer plant contractors than street contractors or concrete contractors. It's a niche business and they're all busy right now. Will they be equally busy in a year? You know? We talked about, well, what if we change the parameters of when we're can, sometimes you can get some savings by being more flexible, but we're kind of boxed into the, the timing of the, that original grant, so... That's where we're at, the, the low bidder was also a local contractor and that's also a consideration, meaning that they, they may not be the low bidder next time we go and that could mean that the labor is from outside the town as opposed to inside the town.
And you don't have the big decision tonight, I mean, that's, we, we have until August, I mean, so...
We have 90 days from one of those.
From June 9th, or from, I'm sorry, May 9th.
So we have another two months.
All right.
Okay?
So mull that one over and call council and decide, and if you have questions with this, definitely reach out to Jeremy.
Questions, come on in and, and talk to Jeremy and I about, uh, about it and if there's another idea out there, but we've been, I've been really trying to think outside, trying to figure out a, an approach here, but I thought you would do a recommendation tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven, consent agenda. You get a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with a fund warrant total of 278,414.49 cents.
Second.
Okay, Tim with the motion and Dave with the second. Any discussion? Third, call the roll, please.
Carter.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Aye. Item eight, city official comments. Anyone want to start? Please, on the table.
I have several.
All right, get your notebook out.
I will read some that you have on your list, I know you always have a lot of them. First off, I'd like to congratulate Light Up Streeter Committee, they had an excellent Park Fest, you know, the weather helped out a lot with that. That was over Memorial Day weekend and I'd like to say thank you to the Hardscrabble Lions Club. Uh, they, a couple of days before Memorial Day, they went out, they put all brand new American flags up and down Main Street, up and down the business area of Park and Bloomington Streets. And, uh, along with that, I'd like to thank Public Works for having fairly short notice repaired, I think, 11 brackets for the flags, so that let the Hardscrabble Lions put up 11 more flags than they would, and it looks really nice. Speaking of the Hardscrabble Lions, uh, week from tomorrow, they will be having their 25th anniversary banquet. 25 years since they split off from the Streeter Lions Club and we've had two Lions Clubs in Streeter. They have done a lot of tremendous good for the community in 25 years. They've helped literally, I won't say hundreds, but probably thousands of people, uh, in that time. Also, Turgleland Historical Society will be having trivia on Saturday night. Got to plug that because they only live on donations and fundraisers. They've become a very integral part of our community. If you can get together a team to support the historical society, it'll be at Romers, come have some fun and, and help out your historical society. And last, but not least, I want to congratulate Melissa Badger. Uh, she has been, uh, hired as the new executive director of the Streeter Public Library. Uh, she's been with the library for about 12 years and she was just hired on as the director, she's doing a wonderful job, we couldn't be happier. And so congratulations to her. That's all I've got.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention there's a community cleanup that's, um, Central Church of Christ and Lindwall Streeter are doing, it's going to run June 8th through the 15th. And they've divided, um, up into different parks and areas throughout Streeter, so they're looking for volunteers, there's a sign up, um, link on their Facebook page. Another item I wanted to mention tomorrow is the 80th anniversary of D-Day. And many of our parents or grandparents in this room, um, were in World War II and, and fought. So as part of that, tomorrow at Streeter Eagle 6 Theater, there's a documentary called The Girl Who Wore Freedom. It's tomorrow at 7:00 and then there's a second, um, it's actually, it was tonight at 7:00, tomorrow at 7:00 and then June 8th. And it's been a documentary interviewing people that were involved with D-Day. So, um, we don't oftentimes get those special documentaries, um, or films here, so I wanted to mention that. Um, there's also a group that's putting on a community-wide yard sale. Their dates this year are June 20th to the 23rd. If you wanted to participate in that, there's actually, I think, a Facebook group called Streeter Community Garage sale or yard sale. And we, if you had already submitted your name, then you just go ahead, um, if not, contact them as well as get a city permit for, um, the sale. They do not count towards your two, um, limited two sales per year or they're no cost. Uh, but I just wanted to mention that. Otherwise, they have events out there, but, um, check out Streeter Tourism and Events, there's a calendar of what's going on in June. Poco a Poco, um, starts this Saturday and that's a huge, uh, music festival in camp. Um, and they're adding, um, there's a Coffee House concert, there's a Barbershop Quartet, um, some different items there. The next play at Ingleland, until the Junior's coming up. Um, there's a Flag Day concert at City Park, June 15th. We're going to head Liberty Fest, we're Silicon Bran trees until Liberty Fest Parade on June 30th, so there's a lot going on, but definitely check out the Streeter Tourism calendar for that because there's quite a bit, and there's quite a bit, um, for children, um, children's activities for the summer too that are listed on there. So I just want to mention those. Um, anyone from the table have anything?
I am out. Um, annual conference has come out with the dates, September 19th through the 21st and online registration will open June 17th, so...
So let Patty know if you're going to be attending.
Know if you're interested in it.
Moveable, right?
Yes, and it's, um...
It's at the Hyatt?
Yeah.
So that, I'll be going. Is that the Hyatt table?
The one thing I will tell you is there's times when we sit up here and I think, oh, we got all this, all these things going on and are we making way? And then I go to the IML conference and I hear stories from other communities and I think Streeter does not have it that bad. We're doing pretty good compared to some of the things I hear, so it's, it's always eye-opening and a good learning experience.
There are a lot of benefits to going to that.
Yes, there are. So, all right, um, can I get a motion and second for a German?
We'll move.
Okay. All right. Moose, Carter and Tim, Gary with the second. Third, call the roll, please.
Carter.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Ray. Aye.
Aye.